Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Education on Monday, June 28th. And if you'd please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. Before we start our official meeting this evening, I would just like to take a moment to congratulate Dr. Gibson on her recent wedding. And we wish you many years of happiness to come. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And we're glad to have you back in town. So, thank you. All right. Now we have a presentation on attendance.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Worf. I am the Acting Director of Safety. At the moment, my primary responsibilities are in the attendance office. So I wanted to speak this evening to present some recommendations made by an attendance committee that was formed recently. Can you go to the next slide? In January of this year, the State Attendance Policy 4110 was updated. And as a result, we need to take a look at our county attendance policy and to determine what procedures we need to put into place so that we are in alignment with Policy 4110. One thing that is required by the committee or by the policy is that we seek input from teachers, principals, the attendance director, parents and guardians, and community leaders. So we formed this attendance committee with representatives from each of those groups. And I'd like to take a moment to thank those who participated and gave their feedback and input. Next slide. The committee met in June to discuss three specific areas. One, we wanted to define what is meant by meaningful contact that needs to be made when students start to accumulate unexcused absences. Secondly, we wanted to define what is meant by excessive absences, which may require that a home visit be triggered. And lastly, we wanted to make recommendation of how the enactment of the policy may differ for virtual students in the upcoming school year. Next slide. First, I want to talk about meaningful contact. The policy states that if the student has three unexcused absences during the year, that there be meaningful contact with the parent or guardian to ascertain why the student is accumulating unexcused absences, to talk about what measures a school may employ to assist the student in attending and not incurring any additional absences. Furthermore, if the student continues to miss and have unexcused absences, meaningful contact should again be made at five days. And at 10 days, a complaint may be made before the magistrate. Next slide. In the past, the school would make contact when the student began to accumulate unexcused absences. And that was typically done by a teacher and/or administrator. And at five days, the school and the county office would mail home a letter. And it would ask that the parents contact the school and go into the school with their child to meet with the administrator to talk about attendance. The revised policy has replaced some of the verbiage. Written notices are no longer required. They don't specifically say that the guardian needs to come in for a conference. They've replaced those with meaningful contact at both three and five days. Next slide. So the committee felt that at three days, the meaningful contact should be made via phone. And they recommended that a school designee reach out to the parent or guardian to discuss why the student is missing and being marked unexcused, and how we can prevent the student from continuing in that fashion. And the goal of the contact is to change the behavior and increase the attendance. We also felt that it was very important to document any attempted phone call, and whether a call was returned, and what the outcome of that conversation was. If the parents did not call back, the number was bad, et cetera. And the committee discussed several ways that we might want to document that contact. And for in-person students, there is an option in our WEVA system called TAG, and they can make attendance notes. And that way, other administrators in the building can also see what was done. And it's easy for us at the county office to look into that without having to look into shared OneDrive folders, et cetera. Next slide. At five days, we wanted to define meaningful contact as a letter from the county office. It was highly recommended that we use a friendlier version than the state form letter that is currently used. And as is done now, we would send a copy to the school for this attendance file. And the letter needs to include pertinent parts of the attendance policy, as well as requests to contact the school to discuss absences, emphasizing that we just want to make sure that everyone's doing well and safe, and that we're trying to turn this behavior around. Secondly, at five days, we felt that it was still important to have that Student Assistance Team meeting. In the file, we would include what happened at three days. And again, the goal of the meeting is to change the behavior and increase attendance. Next slide. The committee's rationale and what we considered, they really prefer the phone call at three rather than five, or rather than a letter. They felt that after three days, student may not have time to return with a note, especially if the absences happen three days in a row. There may be delays in the postal service. And the key intent is to talk about the issue and try to fix it. So they thought that a phone call would be the best method at three days. We spent a lot of time talking about the difference between consecutive absences versus scattered throughout the year. The conversation would be very different if a student missed five days in a row, versus one day, you know, one month, a couple months later, another day, and so on. We also realized that at the large schools, it might be difficult to make the phone calls. So it's recommended that they have a dedicated person to make those calls and be responsible for that. And during that phone call, to offer resources and to use discretion to see if they do think that the parent needs to come in with the student for a sit-down conference. And again, this needs to be documented well. Next slide, please. The rationale of sending a letter, they wanted to send a letter from the county office just for good documentation. And in case there is an issue with the phone and messages not being received, we have that documentation that the parent was notified. And that would be sent whether the absences were consecutive or scattered. The committee felt it was redundant to also send a letter from the school. Again, the key intent is to have a discussion with the parent or guardian about the absences. And we would still document that in the Student Assistance Team file. It is in a OneDrive folder that's shared with the attendance office, so that we can monitor what's going on, especially if it does go to court. But during that SAP process, the key is to talk about appropriate interventions and determine if they're effective. At 10 days, the school administration would contact the county office to discuss what kind of contact they have made and request action. And that could include a home visit or a complaint before the magistrate. Next slide. So in summary, the proposed changes, the parent would still receive automated calls daily after attendance is put in by the office. The parent would still be contacted after three absences. The letter would be sent from the county office after five, and that Student Assistance Team process would begin. Lastly, the committee recognized that the county was more lenient with truancy charges last year due to COVID, but they, truancy may be pursued after 10 unexcused absences. Okay. The second point that we discussed was what is meant by excessive absences. The policy states that we should make home visits if students have excessive unexcused absences or if requested by the administration. Next slide. In the past, the principal or attendance director has requested home visits by the school resource officer. If they're not available, we request it from the sheriff's department. And it was regardless of the number of unexcused absences. The new practice that we recommend, if the school is unable to make meaningful contact after three consecutive days, they should attempt to get on the fourth day. If the contact can still, is not made, then at five consecutive absences, that we need to have our home visit. And the committee felt that we could definitely request them earlier if administrator felt that that needed to be made. And again, the documentation would be included in the Student Assistance Team file. The rationale for this, student safety is a priority. And if we haven't seen a student for a week, then we definitely need to check on the student if there are concerns about their welfare. If the student is out sick and administrator has concerns, it was recommended that the counselor ask to Zoom with the student for a few minutes, just to check in and make sure that they're okay. And the committee emphasizes that it's important to have eyes on the student. So if there is not a change in attendance, the student continues to miss consecutive days, that we need to check on them. Something that we need to consider are the different options of who may make the home visits. And some of the possibilities are listed. School staff could attend in pairs, preferably with an administrator and/or counselor. The school resource officer and the school representative, or the resource officer and the attendance coordinator could go. If the resource officer is unavailable, the sheriff's department, the attendance coordinator and a representative, or the attendance coordinator and an attendance worker, or two attendance workers. So one possibility to consider is having one worker for each high school in their feeder schools. And that's similar to what Berkeley County does. Some things to also consider, the school personnel may be unable to go to the home if they're busy in their building and other roles. We've had reports by those who have made visits, that families and students are more receptive if they know the visitors. And safety is a priority. So we do need to have visits in pairs and include the sheriff's officer, resource officer, if safety is a concern. Lastly, it's very hard to estimate how many home visits we're talking about if you're looking at five consecutive days. But just to give everyone a sense of numbers, in our last normal school year, 2019, we mailed well over 2,000 10-day letters and filed 68 truancy cases. All right. Lastly, I wanted to talk about virtual students. So the policy defines absence as students not being present in the facility or failing to engage in their virtual or remote learning. And the state does have recommendations for virtual students. And it focuses on meaningful engagement and making progress. So if the student hasn't attended classes, but they're doing all the work independently, it's appropriate to code them as engaged. And the code V1 is virtual engaged. Last year, with all of the difficulties with technology, attendance at live sessions was not mandatory. Attendance for virtual and remote students was taken on Monday for the previous week. Students had until 8:00 AM to be marked present. It was very challenging for teachers if the students partially completed their week's work, or if they made progress in some classes or not others. It became very, very challenging to feel confident in attendance. And a big concern was that the teachers did not always have eyes on the student. As we mentioned, especially at the secondary level, this students could be doing their lessons on their own independently and never be on a live lesson. So this year, we have made some changes to virtual attendance in JVA 2.0. So daily attendance is very important, and the camera must be on during live lessons and assessments. Students may have a blurred background or a virtual background. Due dates are defined at the discretion of the teacher. A lot of teachers didn't like having everything due on Monday for the previous week because they felt like they couldn't move forward until students had done previous work. And lastly, students are required to participate in teacher-scheduled check-ins. So this would be very important at the secondary level. So the committee recommendations for virtual students, since our elementary students will be attending daily lessons with their teacher with the camera on, they can take attendance the same way as we do for in-person students. Secondary students will have asynchronous lessons. They will be monitored by a county teacher who will serve as a facilitator, and they will meet during the week for a homeroom. We had some discussion about how often we should have that homeroom and how often we have, should have check-ins. The committee was, ended up with the recommendation that three days a week would be ideal. And if we did Monday, Wednesday, Friday, if students missed one of those check-ins, they would be marked absent for that day. If there were two, then it would be equivalent to three days. So for example, if they missed Wednesday and Friday, they would be marked absent for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And if they miss all three of those, then they would be marked absent for the week. The facilitator will be responsible for providing a links lesson. And so if we do that one day, then there would be homeroom two days a week. Again, this would totally align the attendance with what's being done for the in-person students. Three unexcused absences would result in contact with the parent, five a letter, and the Student Assistance Team meeting, and five without any kind of contact in a row would be home visit. At the Student Assistance Team meeting, it may be determined that the students need to check in more regularly. They may need to go to their teacher's office hours. They might need to return to the in-person environment. And the attendance records and the contact and SAP meetings for the virtual students will be done at the county level. We wanted to take that burden off of the schools. Next slide. The rationale, again, is very important to have these regular check-ins with cameras on to ensure the safety of our students. One of the virtual teachers on the committee reported that her students all admit, or many of them admitted, to struggling with procrastination. And they said that they really enjoyed the individual meetings with their teacher or facilitator. The committee felt that perhaps daily check-ins might be too frequent, especially if the students are taking all of these asynchronous lessons. But they, you know, regardless, they should be working on their work every day. And the committee said that if they were coming up, if coming to class for the check-ins but not doing their work and not progressing, that they still needed to have a Student Assistance Team meeting and discuss possibly returning to in-person because that wouldn't be for them. Okay. I know that at least one or two of the committee members is present via Zoom. So if anyone is on the committee and listening in and they would like to add any comments, feel free to put in the chat if you would like to speak. And do we have any questions?
I have a question. You're presenting these as, for something to create a new policy? Are these going to turn into policies? Do we vote on it?
Well, we would need to align our county policy so that it is in alignment with the new state requirements. So we will need to eventually put that out for public comment and implement some changes.
I'm really impressed that there's more concern with the student's safety than parent punishment. Is that the state, is that coming from the state, or did the team, you know, do that?
Both, actually, both. A lot of counties have reported that teachers felt uncomfortable with not having the cameras on and not being able to see their students regularly.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the cameras as much as the face-to-face students. Just, I'm just, overall, the policies. Just, just wondering if, because it, you know, I'm talking about that case that I brought up before.
I think overall, it's more of a committee decision and just realizing the need for student safety.
I appreciate it. It's the only question I have.
Well, thank you to all the committee members. I know, you know, when stuff comes down from the state and us having to churn it and work it and, you know, make it, our policies fit the new regulations and suggestions, that it's a lot of work. So, thank you to everybody that did participate in that.
Definitely.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right. Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Ms. White.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Gibson, it's my pleasure to bring you an update this evening in the area of operations. I'll start with maintenance. Summer list projects that schools gave to maintenance are in full swing. The maintenance crew has begun, began the scramble for school year 2022. So they're working their way through various projects that the schools have requested. For bond project update, the TA Lowry MIP, well, let me start with TA Lowry MIP, which is not a bond project. It's an SBA project. It is underway. They've begun work at TA Lowry on demoing the old system, and they're installing new fan coil units. At this time, the project plan is to get all the new equipment for the HVAC installed. And we're going to need to continue to utilize the old control system. The old, the new control system has had a delay, but the old system is compatible with the new equipment. So at a time that is practical and reasonable for the school, when they're on a break or over a weekend, we'll switch that system out. Otherwise, the project is well underway and on time. Now, for bond projects, the Jefferson High School turf project, due to some rain we've had, it's lost some days. It's still on time. The field is currently at subgrade. They completed a concrete curb, with the exception of the construction entrance, which they'll complete that once they're done hauling everything in there. The drainage system is almost complete, and they're bringing in stone now. And we've had goalposts delivered. So it's a very exciting project that's moving along. The right denny roof is nearing completion. They've completed the rubber on the roof, and the metalwork should be wrapped up this week. And then they'll be moving on the same company well to Blue Ridge Elementary School. And they'll be in that project around the first of July, which is probably after the fourth. The Blue Ridge Brick Repair, that is also a bond project, is scheduled for completion in July. And the floor tile at CW Shipley is moving smoothly and should be completed before the holiday weekend. So it's a rapidly moving project. Rants and RTUs have been ordered, and once they're delivered, we'll install those. The Wildwood Middle School fields right now are all about sod, keeping our sod very healthy, particularly in the heat. The rain and the watering, the fields, though, is slowing the other parts of the project, but it does protect our investment of the sod. Mr. Vines and Mr. Kaiten have worked very well together to ensure that that continues once the C L Lane's company moves out and we take that over. The goalposts have been ordered, and they'll be installed in July with bleachers on the way by early August to be installed. Bottle fill stations, as we're coming out of the pandemic, they're on order for months and months. So as maintenance gets them in, they're installing them in equal numbers in schools so that every school has some. But that's kind of a slow-moving project that we're just doing over time due to the high demand for those now. The tennis courts are targeted for completion before the end of July. And the track repairs at Charlestown Middle School are also scheduled for completion in July. So we're fairly on time right now with all of our projects, which is exciting news. Technology, meanwhile, is currently working on the distribution of our Chromebooks for K-2. In child nutrition, we've been supporting five-day multi-meal packs for Jefferson County children. They're distributed on Tuesdays from 8:30 to 9:30 at our summer experience locations, which are Drieswood Elementary, North Jefferson Elementary, Shepherdstown Elementary, Jefferson High School, and Washington High School. And this week, we want people to know that we're delivering double meal boxes. So they'll have this week's meal packs and next week's because the July 4th holiday falls next week. Once again, this year, we're excited to announce that the USDA and the WVD have granted a waiver that all students in Jefferson County will receive free breakfast and lunch for the upcoming year. So we're operating under the same summer feeding pattern that we did last year. That will continue. Transportation is looking for bus drivers. We're still looking. So we'd like to ask that anyone who knows of someone who wants to work on a great team at the transportation department, apply online at jcswv.org under the JCS Jobs tab. And they scroll down to the new opportunities where they'll find that subbus operator position. We train for free. And if they have questions about the process, they can be answered by calling transportation directly at 725-7664. I just want to plug the bus drivers because we need them. We certainly need substitutes. That's my update for this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now we have approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting held June 14th, 2021? Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Cable. Any discussion?
Yeah. I think it's important that my reason for voting against the consent agenda last time is noted because I had said that the position of Director of Operations of Safety and Facilities was not approved by the board, and we shouldn't have been hiring. And the Human Resources Coordinator, I don't know her title, she said that it wasn't necessary, that it was just a shift or an alignment. But I did contact the State Department of Education, and they said it is a violation of code. So I just want to note it that that's the reason that I said no, voted against it.
All right. Is there any interest in adjusting the minutes that were provided to us about the board meeting held June 14th, 2021?
It's my understanding that that's, a vote's not needed. I thought that if, if you're just making a correction, that's my understanding. I could be wrong.
Well, I don't think that's a correction. I mean, the minutes reflect that you voted against it.
Yeah, but I wanted to say why. And I'm just making that clear. I mean, so I never noticed until, most of what I say often doesn't go into the minutes. But if other board members make statements, it's word for word. I see their comments in the minutes. So that's why I started paying more attention. And so I'm not arguing that everything I say go in the minutes, but I think that something where the board is violating the code, and I think that's important. And this is a legal document, and we shouldn't be relying on videos because the videos can be pulled or spliced or who knows what. But the, you know, the minutes are the documentation. And if we are audited, I would like, you know, the auditors to know that I did not, you know, agree to violate state code. So that's where I stand.
All right. So there's a motion on the table to approve the minutes from the board meeting held June 14th, 2021. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Of those?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Which one are we voting on? Let's approve it without the changes, you mean?
Correct.
Oh, then, no.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have citizens' comments. And citizens' comments. We're slowly returning back to normal meetings, and we need to go back to our normal policies. And our normal policies used to be that speakers would sign these forms. And I don't think everybody's been signing forms since we're doing Zoom and in-person. It's just a mix. So I'm just going to go over this briefly with you. The speaker procedure is number one, speaker must arrive and complete a copy of the speaker form no later than 10 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Number two, the completer's speaker's form is to be submitted to the superintendent or clerk of the Board of Education prior to the beginning of the meeting. And that's this form that I'm reading the instructions off of. Number three, all speakers are limited to three minutes. Number four, speakers shall not engage in negative or derogatory statements that use names or positions by which persons can be identified. And number five, speakers who deviate from the information provided on the speaker form will be called out of order by the chair and required to cease their comments. Now, let's revisit, revisit number four and five briefly. We always talk about our number one priority being student safety. It's also our duty to protect our staff's safety. Recently, we had a meeting where one of Recently, we had a meeting where one of our employees was verbally attacked, and this behavior is not acceptable. And I apologized to Ms. Tanya Dallas-Lewis, the employee, and promised to be a better steward of public comment. We also recently had one speaker who veered off topic and, um, will also prevent speakers from deviating off the relevant topics that they've signed up for. Just a reminder that, um, public comment is an opportunity to hear from the community about the work of the school system and should be relevant to the school system. So first up this evening is Mr. Christopher Sedlock. If you give me just a moment to get my timer ready. All right, whenever you're ready, sir.
Congratulations to the Jefferson High School baseball and Washington High School softball teams for advancing to their respective state tournaments in Charleston last week. Coach Lowry's record of success with Jefferson baseball is truly remarkable, and Washington softball team deserves special commendation as the only team to qualify for the state tournament without a senior on its roster. All high school athletes learn how to overcome obstacles to their success, but Washington softball and baseball student athletes are annually disadvantaged because they attend the only high school in the region without lights on their home playing fields. No lights for Washington's baseball and softball student athletes mean that they play more away games than home games, ride more buses, and miss more class and study hours. No lights require that home games start at four-thirty or five to complete play before dark. Those early game times keep many tax-paying Washington softball and baseball parents from seeing their sons and daughters play. And fewer spectators result in fewer dollars to support Washington baseball and softball. Twelve years ago, this board approved funding for Washington High School. When it was constructed, the conduit and electrical wiring for outdoor field lighting was installed. But after twelve years, the job is still not fish and finished. In June of last year, the superintendent and district leadership held a Zoom call with parents to discuss items for inclusion in the November bond call. At that time, I noted the lack of baseball and softball lighting at Washington, and the superintendent said to an assistant, "Write that down." In the name of equity, it is long past time to stop disenfranchising the student athletes that play baseball and softball at Washington High School. Please, find a way to light their fields and show them how to finish a job once it is started. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Carmen Bratton. And after Carmen, we have Asada Moore.
Good evening. I am coming to you again to reiterate the importance of our education in our county for all students, especially for math. The last time I spoke, I explained that our state is tied forty-eighth out of fifty for the lowest math scores. We must stand with unity in our community to make this happen for our children. Black Math Genius is offered to all students. Our children, your child matters, your child matters, and my child matters. Therefore, our children deserve the chance to do better. May God bring us peace in our community, and as I said before, unity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Moore, and I believe that's via Zoom. And after Ms. Moore, we have Karen Buck.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, whenever you're ready.
Thank you to Superintendent Dr. Gibson, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Tilly, Tanya Dallas-Lewis, Tara Mahoney, Joyce White, board members, parents, and other community members. My name is Asada Moore, and I'm the creator of the Black Math Genius program. I have a mathematics degree from Michigan State University, educational leadership and effective communication training at Harvard University, and was a leadership fellow at the University of Chicago for two years. I was involved in numerous studies conducted by the University of Chicago Consortium on School Research. I also have a degree in arithmetic scholarship from the University of Eppettie Sue for my training on Egyptian mathematics. I have been an educator for twenty-seven years. I know about educating children. Specifically, I know how to contribute to the success of black children, as evidenced by the success of my students. If I were small-minded, I would be offended that with all of my experience, expertise, and decades of success, my program was taken down by two individuals that know a minuscule amount about educating children compared to myself. However, I am a problem solver that knows how to have a laser focus on goals. The goal here is to raise the math performance level for black students. However, if asked, I would have gladly prepared a plan for all students. In a recent study by reference that rates stakes based on educational attainment and quality of education, West Virginia came in as the second worst in the country. With that, seventy-five percent of your black students are twice as bad in mathematics. So I asked, how long has this educational cancer been allowed to permeate your black community without a remedy? What initiatives have been implemented over the past few decades to address the dismal math scores of your black students? Even if they were to double their performance, they'd still be last. Look at what your students are saying through the behavior data, because this is not about adults. When you look at that data, you will see black students more than any other students are disruptive in class, disrespecting, and skip the most classes. This isn't because they have no morals, as one person stated. It's because they don't feel respected or a part of the learning. They don't see themselves in the lessons, so they act out. Very similar to how the adults responded to the Black Math Genius program because they didn't like it or felt the part. I want to make sure that I'm clear. This is not about adults and how they feel about something they know nothing about. This is about the success of children. And right now, the children that are suffering the most are black children. What some of you have done and allowed to happen is the King to saying, "What about children with asthma?" When trying to solve medical issues for children with lupus. The Black Math Genius program was never about being anti. It was about being pro. It addressed no issues of racism, white supremacy, or white privilege. It does not address critical race theory, which should just be called American history, no matter how unpleasant that may be for some. I hope to get back to the mission at hand soon, and I'm available to help your district achieve the success that all children deserve. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have Karen Buck, followed by Barbara Fuller.
My name's Karen Buck. I'm a concerned grandparent. The Black Math Genius program. The website, uh, states a program that is more of a traditional way of teaching. Uh, it attempts to build confidence in the student, and it's really not a bad curriculum. But here's what it's not. It's not Common Core, which is what all the other kids are stuck with. Our black community saw the declining test scores and were allowed to do something about it. The rest of the kids are still stuck with Common Core. So we're second worst in math in the country. Our superintendent was hired in twenty-fifteen. She's had six years to address the declining test scores, but she has chosen Common Core, Black Math Genius, and Biden money for critical race theory, and no advanced placement math programs in school for the kids. What better way to decrease the achievement gap than to give to one and take away from the other? That's pretty slick. Parents, do you see how this works? In a few minutes, this board will vote on a revised budget showing an additional revenue to Jefferson County schools, the amount of three-point-nine million dollars from the Biden administration, and earmarked for the Black Math Genius program. There it is on the budget. This will be voted on without any discussion. Do you really think we believe that it costs three-point-nine million dollars to teach a math class? I mean, come on. Uh, do you really, uh, who's really getting the money? Who's getting the rest of the money? The Biden rules are, if you take the money, you have to teach critical race theory. Black Math Genius is part of critical race theory, and it's meant to divide the people. As you can see, we're divided. If you give special privileges to a group of people because of their skin color, it's discrimination. No matter what color the people are that you pointed at, it's still discrimination. So our children will now be reeducated to learn that discrimination is okay. They'll be reeducated to feel ashamed of themselves and their country. Is this the kind of world God wants for our children? So we don't want this thing. It's being forced on us, and they're using our tax dollars to do it. They're laughing at us. Parents, do you see how this works? We, the parents and the grandparents, will knock back down. We will not be quiet. We will continue to fight this every step of the way. And in fact, we have just begun to fight. Thank you.
Next up is Barbara Fuller, followed by Deb Hale.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Fuller. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. I'm here to address the board regarding Black Math Genius program. I've reviewed the program and believe it's a great tool and option for the children of Jefferson County. However, your marketing of this program has created unnecessary divisions, whether intentional or not. My questions are, why do we need a summer math program, and why aren't the children learning during the regular school year? I was advised that the numbers that we were provided with do not accurately depict our county's standing. The numbers that were shared did not break out the special education children. I'm not sure why it didn't, but I could only assume that including it would make us look more dire. Why do we not fully explain why a group of children are not learning during the course of a school year? Why are we looking at color as a factor instead of looking at the facts? First being absenteeism. This has been a longstanding issue within the county, as we all heard a minute ago. You can't learn when you don't attend. Second, our ever-evolving math curriculum, this new math has done irreparable damage, not only to the children of color, but to all children in this county. This Black Math Genius program should be taught to every student. We are educators in our own right because we have children. We should be lifting our children up instead of tearing them down, saying that they are less than. That is what you are doing by targeting a group of children. I know plenty of children of color who have attended AP classes, honor classes, one this year who graduated magna cum laude, who, not one mention of that young man. Those children, many of them who are now adults, what are you telling them? That they don't matter? Well, they do. Stop instilling racism in our children and teach them as one. There was a press release from you guys back on June night that stated that there would be community forums about this program. Why haven't they been scheduled? And why are we considering even approving a budget for a program without these forums being held? I'd like to remind the Board of Education that they were elected by this community and that our tax dollars pay your salary. You work for us, and if you're not going to listen to your community, we will have to do everything in our power to remove you from office and replace you with people who will listen.
Thank you. Next up, we have Deb Hale, followed by Sandra Christian.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Hale. I'm a mother and a taxpayer in Jefferson County. Ever since hearing about the summer program, Black Math Genius, I have been skeptical. On its face, such a class separating children by race and skin color sounded blatantly racist to me, but I have other concerns. The June ninth edition of The Spirit reported that Black Math Genius summer program would cost the school district eighty-three thousand dollars. Fifty-nine students were reportedly enrolled. Meanwhile, an online course of the same program is listed at one-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars per student. Do you have the math? The difference between the two programs, same thing, comes to seventy-one thousand dollars. Why would the school district waste so much taxpayer money when a virtual program is available at a drastically cheaper rate? But wait, now there's that Black Math Genius line item in the current school budget for four million dollars. Where did that figure come from? What's it to be spent on? The school board needs to explain. I don't think that the school district should spend one penny on this program, and here's why. The head of Urban Intellectual is a marketing partner with the creator of Black Math Genius program, publicly provided false information about our own Jefferson County. He said, "Our district is quote ninety, ninety-five percent black," unquote, and then referred to two local white women who spoke out against the programs as Karens. The term Karen is meant as a derogatory, indeed racist, term for a white woman who disagrees with the liberal message. That is unacceptable. He also said, "Nobody on this planet has ever done black and African people any favors as people you have no friends," unquote. He solicited radical supporters from across the country to phone our school board office to protest what he sees as community pushback to stop the Black Math Genius class. He clearly employs unscrupulous and dishonest tactics tactics to promote his business, but that's not all. The creator of Black Math Genius claims that public schools are, quote, "systemically racist." She says, "Public schools suppress black students. They don't allow them to be great," unquote. The two go on to say that, quote, "Every day is war," and that "public schools are waging a psychological war against our children," unquote. Really? This is the enlightening message that these folks want to teach our kids? Are you kidding me? This does not sound like math at all. In fact, it sounds like pure radical political activism. I never learned any history in math class, and I have not heard of any racist incidents in our local schools. Rather than straight math, which I agree our kids could use more of and at a more rigorous, challenging level, this course is flat-out racist propaganda. Why on earth would this school board deliberately invite outside agitators into our school system who in their own language call out our public schools for being systemically racist? The progress we in America have made over the last fifty-plus years has been amazing. After all, Americans elected a black president, served for eight years, and more recently, a black vice president. America is one of the least racist countries on earth. We don't need destructive segregation in our Jefferson County schools. Please keep political activism out of our classrooms. Black Math Genius today means critical race theory tomorrow. Please don't do this to our children.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Sandra Christian. And I believe she's by Zoom. And following her, Danielle Grant.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, whenever you're ready.
Yes, thank you. Um, so last time I spoke on Black Math Genius, and that didn't go over so well. Today, I'm going to speak on another issue. And there are families in West Virginia from other countries, and they represent hundreds of children within Jefferson County. They are beautiful blond, blue-eyed, wonderful children. And these children struggle with English. And I am asking for the community and the Board of Education for assistance. And what type of support would they be willing to give these children? So the next question becomes, if we replace those children with these young African-American children and change their location from being right here within the, and within the community, would they, would you still feel as generous? Would you still feel like supporting them? We clearly have a problem in our community. If you replace the struggle with English and replace it with math, how are we going to help? The need still exists. So if you're still feeling generous, how are you going to help? Why the change of heart if you're not? The only thing they changed was the location, the color, and the subject. So it would not be classified as discrimination. So far, the first words of twenty-twenty-one have been critical race theory. Critical race theory is important, and I do not want to take away from that. However, it is not pertinent to this situation. Re- responding to Black Math Genius, it does not apply. There is a problem in our community, and it needs to be fixed. So when we all, when are we going to fix it? Every time the critical race theory is used in this particular setting, you have to laugh because it is demonstrating the lack of knowledge responding to critical race theory. It's like asking someone if they speak Spanish, and they say, "Yes, taco there." Really? So the question remains on the table. When are we going to address the problems that clearly our students have the problems with math in this community? There is a solution on the table, and everyone is finding excuses. All talk to board as to why they cannot support the program. Thank you.
Next up is Danielle Grant, followed by Thomas Miller.
My name is Danielle Grant, and I spoke at the previous board meeting at the conclusion of the meeting.
At the conclusion of the meeting, it was stated the Black Math Genius program would be postponed. My questions are, what is the plan for moving forward? Why do we need public meetings to discuss the program? And will the board issue some type of formal statement? Since I attended the last meeting, I've done some research and discovered the West Virginia Department of Education has an equity clause that needs to be upheld. They also have a partnership with the Herbert Henderson Office of Minority Affairs, which in the press release quotes, "We have a duty and responsibility to all students to provide an education that meets the need of the whole child." This has not happened, and it shows in the data that continuously has been presented. The African-American subgroup is not receiving an equitable educational experience. The program was postponed on the basis of not being inclusive of all races. This is not true because the students of other races were registered for the program, which proves this was not a blacks-only program. Title VI requires no one to be excluded, and there was no student turned away. It is also being stated that our taxpayer dollars are paying for this program, which again is a fallacy because the program was to be funded from federal money. I bring this up to say there are many falsehoods being spread about the program, and the school board is not stepping in to say the truth as to why the program was needed based on the data. I'm asking, where is your dedication to the black student subgroup? That needs assistance, not based on hearsay, but based on the data that has been reflected for years. When will these students be important enough to have a program that is tailored to their needs? As a taxpayer in this community, I feel as though my opinion and need should be heard and met like any other taxpayer. We are not asking for an advantage. We are asking for equal educational opportunities. These students need assistance. They need it now. As parents, we should not have to work this hard to get resources for a program the federal government has already agreed to fund. These numbers did not get like this overnight, but it is your job to recognize the disparity and make changes. But before I end, let me explain critical race theory on an elementary level because it keeps getting brought up. I found this from an online source and wanted to share. Imagine a guy who hates disabled people, built a hotel, and he bans all disabled people from coming, building it in a way that specifically makes it difficult for them. He later sells the hotel. The new owner and staff does not have a problem with disabled people, but the hotel is still designed in a way that does not accommodate disabled people. So although the current owner is not actively discriminating, he's operating in a system that is designed to discriminate and needs to fix it, even if he's not to blame for it. Racism is the same way. The discriminatory practices of the past still have ramifications today. Even if we aren't to blame for them, we must recognize them. Please don't continue to fail these students. They need you to show them they matter just as much as any other subgroup. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Thomas Miller.
Good evening. Sorry, a little late to the game. I had just seen this in the news the other day and hadn't been following, but I found it really alarming. You know, there's a problem with students that have, with their math proficiency, and we should certainly help them, right? But I see we have a program that targets a specific group, as if there are other people that don't need it, or maybe this group of kids that this is marketed to have some special need that others don't. You know, I heard Joe Biden say that that black kids are just as smart as wealthy ones. Like, pretty racist. You know, so we're talking about looking at this later down the, you know, we're going to discuss this a little further and so is this. I think the question is, is really, is this racist or is it not? Is this a racist thing to do? To say, to pick out something by the color of somebody's skin, and it doesn't matter what they are, and give them some sort of thing to do? It's like, okay, so it's open to all people, but you tell me, if you saw a poster that said something was for black kids, for black this, black that, right? And if you were a white kid that maybe needed some help in math, would you think that that was for you? Probably not. You know, so we are leaving these kids out. And I guarantee you, there are plenty of kids out there that have problems with math that come from all races, Asian kids too. Like, I know it's a preconceived notion that all the Asians are good at math, but that's not true. So I think that if you have come up and you have supported something that is, that is so racist, it divides people by the color of their skin, that you're going to offer something to somebody based on their skin color, or at least just make it look like it, then this is a problem. And, you know, it's time to move on and get somebody that doesn't believe in this stuff because we have no room for racism. Let me close by quoting Morgan Freeman. You want to end racism? Stop talking about it.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment for this evening. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any updates or changes to the consent agenda?
Not on the human resources section. However, I would clarify, as several folks have pointed out, that in our finance department, they labeled the $3.9 million that is actually ARPESR funding, which is basically the federal COVID CARES funding, that is round two of that funding. And that funding provides for a whole host of programs. It is not solely for the Black Math Genius program. That is one of many summer programs, technology and other items that are within that SRF2 funding. So I apologize that that was not made clear and that it was confusing for folks. Understandably, that's on us. So to date, we've actually spent around $13,000 on the Black Math Genius program. And where we go from, that is going to be, as yet to be determined based on the public forums and the feedback that we get. But I wanted to clarify that in the financial approvals.
Okay. Thank you. And just to clarify, that $13,000, I mean, that was for licenses and training and that kind of thing. It wasn't, you know, based on for students. So once it's purchased, it can be used however much we need it, whether it's one student or 20 students or 100 students. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I ask some questions about the budget?
Sure. We should probably get a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cable. Now, questions or discussion?
Yeah. I had asked through an email earlier about that one, the $4 million, and then the $1 million for the SOUL program. And my understanding, and this is a lot for the public to understand, because it took me a while, and I'm still not sure if I understand, but it sounds like this is money that's being transferred because it's got a T, and the key says transfer. So it's being transferred into an account to be used for various things. Whenever it says the ESIRV, that's what that means. So the $1 million, May 10th, that for SOUL, that's a separate summer school program? Is that right?
No, ma'am. That is our summer school program. And I can ask Ms. Marone, who's actually, she's via Zoom. But that is the, she has a coding system for each of the programs so that when we have to report out on the use of federal funds, that she can track those. And SOUL is our summer program. And whether or not she's breaking that out by a designation for time or by location, I don't know the answer to that. But I can get that from Ms. Marone if that would be helpful.
Well, I'm just trying to understand and hoping that it helps the public as well. So the summer school program is the SOUL program, and the Black Math Genius is part of that other, and it's not considered the summer school program. That's a separate thing that falls under that $4 million, it sounds like. Is that right?
Can you ask that again? I'm sorry. I didn't follow your explanation. I apologize.
So the SOUL program is summer school. That's what that is. The Black Math Genius is something separate. It's not in the same funding as the summer school program.
That is correct.
So it would be that 18, or whatever you said, $13,000. That's coming out of that $4 million, approximate $4 million.
It's coming out of federal funding, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And this summer school is also federal funding. Anything that says ESIRV is federal funding.
Yes, ma'am. That's actually, we have Title I federal funding. We have a lot of different categories. But if it says ESIRV, it is specifically one of the funding rounds for COVID CARES Act money that has restrictions on how we can spend it.
So there's another $3 million. Well, $2.69 million. And that one says ARPESR, 3-25%. And then there's another ESIRV2, which is $1.6 million. I'm just curious, like, these are all being transferred and earmarked for something.
Mm-hmm. Well, we did a presentation earlier this year on round one, which was a little over $1 million, and was devoted to COVID mitigation and technology. Round two of that ESIRV funding was the $3.9 million. And we did a presentation to the board, and that was for reduced class sizes. We maintained lower class sizes so that we could do remediation support for students this year. Safety mitigation strategies, us maintaining all of the higher-level cleaning protocols and the supplies for those. Remediation support, us supporting the vastly increased number of students who both are showing lower test scores and who need to be remediated for their next level of classes. COVID leave support, which the board generously voted for through the end of the year so that someone wouldn't have to use their personal leave if they had to be quarantined. COVID contact tracing, the Technology One-to-One Project came out of that. Child nutrition for us to supplement for summer feed programs. Compensatory remediation services specifically for special education students. Jefferson Virtual Academy services. So all of those are within that ESIRV funding.
What would the $3 million intra-fund transfer? What is that for? What does that mean?
And to get, I can't speak to why.
It's June 20th.
It's listed that way.
Transfer $3 million, just straight $3 million intra-fund transfer. I don't know. It's just there's a lot of big dollars on this budget, and it's hard to make a lot of sense of it.
Well, and we can certainly, Ms. Marone can come back, as she did the last budget meeting, and we can do another one. Because we given one specifically on the round two expenditures. She can come back and give one on how the finance office is tracking that. So it can make it easier to interpret those codes because to your point, if it's difficult for someone to interpret it, there's a lot of room for misinformation out there for folks. So we can certainly have her come back and do that.
I think that's my only questions.
So there's a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? All right. Thank you. Unfinished business, none. New business. 12A is the superintendent's evaluation, and that actually gets done in executive session. Is there, I'd rather not go into executive session while everyone's here and then have to come back out and make everyone wait. So is there a motion to move the superintendent's evaluation to the end of the agenda?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Cable. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. All right. 12B, request approval to solicit bids through an RFP for annual fire alarm inspections.
This evening, we'd like to ask the board to allow us to go out for an RFP so we can get on fire alarms inspected. We're looking for a company, before we make a motion, I'd like to tell a ruling for a company that is able to do the variety of alarms we have in a system because we do have different alarms. So I'll await your motion.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the solicitation of bids for an RFP for the annual fire alarm inspections?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cable. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the bids through an RFP for the annual fire alarm inspections, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. All right. C, request approval to solicit bids through an RFP for playground mulch.
We're just, we're just asking for our annual request so we have mulch on the playground to keep the kids safe.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cable. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Any question or discussion? All right. All in favor of approving to solicit bids for an RFP for the playground mulch, say aye.
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 Oppose? Thank you. All right. Moving on to number D. Action on approval for outside organizations within Jefferson County to use Jefferson County school buses.
This is the same request we had the last board meeting, and we have two additional organizations that would like to utilize our school buses around our summer school SOUL schedule.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the outside organizations within Jefferson County to use Jefferson County school buses? Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cable. Any discussion or question? Ms. White, do they provide their own bus drivers?
No. Ironically, they don't. And Mrs. Harner kindly pointed out to me that there was one listed, not two. Just for full clarity and disclosure, she keeps us straight.
Okay. Well, maybe they can provide us with some bus drivers for during the school year if we let them use our buses during the summer. All right. All in favor of approving the outside organization within Jefferson County to use the Jefferson County school buses, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. All right. Moving on to superintendent's comments. Superintendent, do you have anything for us this evening?
Actually, the only thing that I have is to say thank you to everybody who's here who took time away from your family and your busy schedules. No matter what side of any debate that you're on, I think that it's, that these are good things to wrestle with. And I think it's important that we all assume positive intent. I think everybody is here because they really care about kids, and they really think it's important that we do the right thing. And I, for one, am glad if we're going to have a discussion, if we're going to have a debate, we're not having it about whether or not kids deserve for us to serve them. We're having a debate about how to do it, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing to wrestle with. So to your point, we had, I don't know who made that point, but about holding a series of forums. We will be releasing this week to all of our parents links for you to go in and sign up. We'll have a series of dates, different times, different dates, to do small group forums where we are going to look at and review the data for all of our subgroups and their performance over the years, talk about what programs we already have in place, and then get feedback from people about here or all of it. Because there's lots of programs out there that purport that they can help kids, and we'll go through them and say, okay, give us your feedback, right? This is what educators are saying. This is what we have the research on. This is the data. And if we can build a better solution together, I'd rather take a step back, all of us look at it together and agree to move forward together. So we have that commitment, and we will be, that will be out before the end of this week.
Thank you.
All right. So this evening, I believe we do have an executive session for the superintendent's annual evaluation for personnel.
And you have a personnel hearing.
Right. And a legal update, and we do anticipate action with at least the personnel hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cable. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
I have a, I think it's called a point of order, but I have a concern. I just keep bringing this up, and I just keep bringing this up, and we need to list for the public what we're possibly going into executive session for. And again, it's against state code that we're not doing it. And I did check on it again through a third source, and they confirmed that we need to give some general idea when we go into executive session.
We're going into executive session for the superintendent's evaluation and a personnel hearing?
I know, but it's supposed to be in writing, just so you know. That's what the state has told me, so. Because, I mean, I can tell you all the reasons why it's important to have it in writing, but I'm just letting you know. I mean, I did ask the attorney for the board, West Virginia State Board Association, in front of the whole board, you know, she confirmed it, that you have to have something in writing. And I had mentioned that I had previously asked the state. And so then again, last week, I went to the state. And it is part of the code that we need to start listing something, just a general idea, whether it's personnel matter, legal matter. You don't have to say what it is, but the public, you know, has a right.
Well, I believe we're doing it according to the last guidance we got, but I believe we also had Ms. Sutton check into that guidance to see if there's any updates, so.
We can certainly have her come back and advise the board if there's a question.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so there's a motion to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't want to miss it, so I don't know. Can I say no and still go? I don't know how it works, but I just want to make sure it's clear that this is documented, that I want, you know, the board to start letting the public know. But aye, I'll go in.
All right. Thank you very much.